Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming this evening and spending your time here. I call this September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two zoning meeting of the Burnley County Board of Commissioners to Order. We will have a moment of silence, followed by the pledge allegiance led by Vice Chair Benson.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Deputy County Manager Enrico Grati or Director Lucas Tefoya, are there any changes or additions in the agenda this evening?
Madam Chair, Lucas Tefoya with the Planning Development Services Department. There are no changes to the agenda tonight.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number four, approval of minutes. I move to approve the August ninth, twenty twenty-two zoning meeting minutes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Benson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you, we have a do pass. I move to approve the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two zoning meeting minutes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Benson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you, do pass. We will move on to item number five, appeals. We'll now proceed with the appeals and appeals procedures as follows. This is a quasi judicial proceeding. The commission is to act as judges of the particular facts concerning the parties before it, applying existing law to the facts. The commission is to base its decision only on the facts presented to it by the parties and not on any facts supposed by it that may exist outside the proceedings. The commission is to act with impartiality towards each party, applying the law of the facts without favoritism or bias or the merit desirability of a given result. A commissioner with a financial or family interest in the outcome of a quasi judicial proceeding should disclose any potential conflict in accordance with these rules and should, if necessary, recuse himself or herself from the proceedings. The commission, in rendering its decision, should make a clear statement of what it believes to be the relevant facts and why those facts led to its decision. Each commissioner shall avoid ex parte communications with parties bringing cases before the commission. However, such communications that occur may be cured by the procedure stated in rule number four. We will begin with the staff's presentation. Director Lucas Tefoya to present.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Lucas Tefoya again here with the Planning Development Services Department. I'm just going to give a brief introduction and then we can move into the presentations. This is an appeal of a decision by the Board of Adjustments. The property owners at ninety-two fifty Broadway Southeast requested a statement of zoning certification from the zoning administrator to determine allowable uses under a special use permit. This property is located about four and a half miles south of Rio Bravo off of Broadway. The zoning administrator provided a determination that supersedes a previous zoning administrator's determination. And the property owners decided that they would, or they appealed that decision and that decision was appealed to the Board of Adjustments. The Board of Adjustments' decision resulted in a tie vote and that resulted in the zoning administrator's decision being upheld. So you are being asked again to, in a separate appeal, to either approve that appeal or deny it. So if you deny the appeal, it will uphold the current zoning administrator's certification that was made this year. If you approve the appeal, it will overturn the current zoning administrator's certification and revert to the certification made by a determination made in two thousand and five by the zoning administrator at that time. As you stated, Madam Chair, this is a quasi judicial matter on the record and only parties to the appeal where their counsel are subject to the appeal may present. There was an error outside and the public was getting signed in to present and that is not going to be allowed under current proceedings or rules of procedure. And we're ready to get started.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Tefoya, just because I feel like a bit of what, can you explain again about the public comment? And quasi, just so the community hears.
So this is a, an appeal between the appellant and the opponent. And the opponent would be the county, the appellant, the owners of the property. And so that is the only, since public comment was allowed at the CPC, we're just taking it through as a record that was prepared at the CPC. And so that is why no further public comment is being taken at this time.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please swear in all those presenting today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All of those providing testimony, please stand up, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nick Ham.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, good afternoon. Nicholas Ham, zoning administrator for Burnley County, here to present to you the item under appeal. As Mr. Tefoya explained, this is the result of a request for a zoning certification submitted by the property owners, the Senna family. They asked me some months ago to determine what the allowed uses would be under a special use permit that was granted in nineteen eighty-five. I conducted a thorough review of the file, the proceedings that led to the approval of this special use permit and came to the determination that it is limited to the stockpiling and processing of products that were originally discussed in the nineteen eighty-five application. So going back to how this all began, in nineteen eighty-five, the county received an application for a zone change from A-one to M-one on the subject property. It totaled about forty-five acres. The planning commission conducted a hearing. At standard procedure, they took testimony from the public, from their staff and from the applicant and their agents. After deliberation, the county planning commission came to the conclusion that forty-five acres of M-one zoning in this area would have been inappropriate and that their conclusion was that the zone change was denied. So on a five-two vote, the county planning commission denied the request for zone change. That decision was then appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. Board of County Commissioners conducted similar proceeding, taking testimony from staff, opponents from the public and the applicant and their agents. And as often the board is tasked with doing, they elected to form or to find a compromise. So the suggestion of granting a special use permit in lieu of a zone change from A-one to M-one was brought up during the hearing proceeding. The parties that were present, the minutes of that hearing indicate that that was agreeable to everyone present. The site, the special use permit triggers a requirement that a site plan be approved by staff and that decision was made unanimous by the board at the time. So notably, neither the planning commission nor the Board of County Commissioners elected to grant a zone change, which would have allowed a list of uses in that particular section of the zoning code. They did grant unapproval and it was for uses out of the M-one zone tied to a specific site development plan. And staff signed a site plan that was submitted by the applicant with a memo corresponding that saying this is what the site plan entails for the stockpiling and processing of products, landscaping materials, if you will, to be more specific. All of that, up to that point, was consistent with county procedure, consistent with county law and was something that was defensible from the point of the perspective of these are allowed uses on the property. Fast forward to two thousand and five, predecessor of mine was asked for a zoning certification at that time. That individual came to the conclusion that not, that the special use permit somehow granted M-one uses broadly out of that section of the zoning code, including both permissive and conditional uses. That's of particular importance because even if the board, in their wisdom of the time, granted a zone change to M-one, that would not have included conditional uses. Conditional uses require going through an additional hearing process and approval by the person holding this position, the zoning administrator position. It's subject to notice procedures, allows for public input. It allows for an appellate process to the Board of Adjustment and the Board of County Commissioners. That never occurred. So in analyzing the zoning administrator at the time's determination, I found that he exceeded his specific authority. So the zoning administrator is afforded the ability to amend special use permits, but is specifically limited to not go above and beyond the limits imposed or the intensity that was established by the Board of County Commissioners at the time of approval. So the special use permit, the record indicates that they sought to narrow the approval to allow the business owner at the time to do what they had asked the board to do. Mister, I guess Mister Williams was his name. He indicated that those uses go above and beyond what the board did. So I find that to be an error in both procedure and analysis and interpretation. Three years pass. Mister Williams then signs a site development plan that indicates an asphalt batch plant, among other uses on the property. And again, an asphalt batch plant is a conditional use out of the M-one zone. So going well above and beyond even what the, if the original approval was granted, would have allowed. And not only did he exceed his authority, but he did so in a manner that did not follow the established procedure. So amendments to special use permits at the time required a public hearing and application and appeals process and all the things that go along with that. So today, the question before you is, in its essential form, does the zoning administrator have the authority to supersede the decisions of the Board of County Commissioners? My answer is unequivocally no. By specific design of the statute that enables zoning to be adopted by the county zoning code, you all are the final zoning authority. No member of staff, even Madam County Manager, has the ability to overturn your decisions in that manner. So two more things I want to add. Of particular note, this decision does not preclude any activities that are occurring on the property from continuing to occur. So we're not trying to stop anyone from conducting business that's already happening. And my determination came after an evidence-based analysis of the file. So it's not based upon community sentiment, public input. It's purely a fact-based determination about what can occur on a property based upon what your predecessors at elected officials determined to be allowable on the property at the time. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nick Ham. Any questions from commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Casada.
So a special use permit, is there a time limit on that? Or when the issue of special use permit, it's forever? Or is it until the business is no longer there? Can you, I just, you know, I just want to know about the special use part of the permit.
Sure. Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, the board certainly has authority to impose time limitations on special use permits that are granted. There's not evidence in this particular file that a time limitation was imposed. So generally, what the department and the county would construe that to be would be life of the use. So until such time that it's known or needed and the applicant either withdraws it or the county initiates its cancellation procedures.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
Just to be clear, the special use permit that was granted, and I think in nineteen eighty-five, was very specific about the uses that could be on that particular site. The underlying zone is A-one, it remains A-one, is correct. So it was not an actual zone change. Okay, thank you.
I guess I have a question about are there M-one uses, you talked about the current uses of the land.
Madam Chair, the stockpiling of materials and the processing, those would be permissive M-one uses. And that would be true of the zoning code in nineteen eighty-five when this was approved and the zoning code, if you were to look at it today and municipal code even. So it's true, they are allowed to do M-one uses, but they are limited to the site development plan as was presented and explained to them at the time of the original approval.
Thank you. Okay, if there's not any other questions, we will go to the opponent.
Thank you.
The appellant, sorry.
Madam Chair, commissioners, I'd first like to just point out and raise our objection. We reached out to the county last week because this is an unusual case where we are actually the proponent and the city, the county is the opponent. And so we asked, this came up back in October concerning the wall, irrelevant use. And we're on the fly, the county commissioners had to adjust the agenda because of that. And we brought that to the attention of the county last week, but we were told that you all were just follow the rules. And so am I being charged? I'm a little unclear, so do I get ten minutes or fifteen minutes? Am I, because I am the proponent.
So opponent presentation, fifteen minutes.
So I'm being given the time for, as the opponent.
Madam Chair, if we can defer to legal or Enrico on clarification?
Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair, they are the appellants. So ordinarily, they would be granted fifteen minutes. And I think they could probably, although we have started off with the county going first, they could divide that time for rebuttal if they wanted to.
Madam Chair, just for clarification on the appeals procedure, I have staff presentation at five, which I believe Mister Ham presented. Appellant is ten, opponent is fifteen.
Okay, so you, so I get ten. You are the appellant, you have ten and you will have time for appellants, five minutes after the opponent's presentation if you want it.
And before I start, could we have this up so it works? Is that possible?
I believe it should be working, I hope.
It is currently on, you just need to let me know when you need to display something.
Okay, great, thank you. So we want to ask for the, this commission to uphold our appeal and to reinstate the two thousand and five certified letter from the Z.A. As a starting point, though, to understand what we're talking about, I believe it's important for me to address the issue of law. The state of New Mexico, the Supreme Court of New Mexico, back in nineteen seventy-five, stated that it would use the rule of looking at the actual statement, the actual language of either the permit or statute or ordinance. And if, as long as it's clear and not ambiguous, they would use that language without having any other additional language put in. That would be Burrows versus the Board of County Commissions of Burnley County. So forty-eight years ago, the Supreme Court in Mexico said you have to use the languages there if it makes sense. In keeping with that framework, I feel like it's important that we actually correct some of the presentation from the Z.A. because there's missing information. The original application in nineteen eighty-five was for a zone change. There was no, when you have a zone change, you ask for a zone change. When you have a special use permit, you have to say, I want a special use permit for this use. The original application had no use. It talked about there was chickens in the area and it was lots of M-one, but it didn't go into the use. If you look at the application, you'll see that there's no real tie in the use. Second, he says that, then it goes through the process, it gets to the county clerk, I mean, I'm sorry, it gets to the commission for a hearing on the appeal and the commission is real clear, the commission language is real clear that it is M-one uses with a site plan and with an environmental review of any of the uses. Remember, this is originally for the land. That is forty-five acres. Oh, great, thank you so much. So it's forty-five acres of land. In the commission's language, we have very, it just says M-one uses with no other restrictions except an environmental. In those M-one uses, there would have been uses that would never have triggered environmental study. It doesn't matter, on this property, there is now the requirement, there's now the requirement for environmental study to be used, no matter how they use this property, it must be done. That was the only condition that they had. A year later, after the hearing, when it only says M-one uses, environmental study, site plan, a site plan was developed for track one and only for track one. That's the nineteen eighty-six special use permit that was issued for track one and the site plan that was issued for track one. Fast forward, in nineteen ninety-one, a new site plan, an amendment to the site plan was done and they followed the rules for that for nineteen ninety-one. In nineteen, I mean, two thousand and five, we had Mister Brennan's letter of recommendation or certification letter. In that letter, his language exactly mirrors the language of the original language from the county commissioners, which says, M-one uses, whoop, M-one uses subject to a site plan and subject to an environmental review and monitoring. That is the only thing the county commissioners decided, that's the only restriction they put in. Mister Brennan, Brennan Williams came in and when he did his certification letter, he said, M-one uses, and he read it out of, they mirror the exact language out of here. Then in two thousand and nine, he did a site plan. On that site plan, he even lists, M-one uses, no restrictions from the county commission. And he approved the site plan for track E. So right now, there's a site plan for track one, A, there's a site plan for track E. In the Z.A.'s staff member report and in his conversation and testimony before the Board of Adjusters, Adjustment, he stated that the whole property was controlled by the site plan that was approved for lot, for lot, for track A. And that's not, these have never had a site plan. But he's saying the site plan that was approved a year after the county commissioners made their decision, a year after they voted on the site plan, that site plan, he's saying, rules what the county commissioners did in nineteen eighty-five. You can't have a site plan in nineteen eighty-six be governing the rule of the decision of the board in nineteen eighty-five. It doesn't make sense. He goes on, both in his statement to his SAC report to the Board of Adjusters and in the meeting several times, saying, if you approve this appeal, you're basically saying that all these M-one uses will turn the property into an M-two zoning. Commissioners, M-one zoning has only two permissive, I mean, conditional uses. Poultry production and the asphalt. M-two zoning, as you know, has gas production, oil products production, all kinds of chemicals, it's very laden. An M-one use plus the conditional uses does not equal M-two. But it was used as a scare tactic. It got the crowd all upset, it got the commissioners, I mean, the board members all upset. M-two uses, that can't be it, but it's not true. The representation in the staff report and at the hearing was done. It was a gross misrepresentation of the facts. And I believe that that misrepresentation tainted or changed how the board ruled in this case. He also incorrectly states that somehow there was, in the Board of Adjustment hearing, there was a, an allegation that there were some kind of shenanigans going on in two thousand and eight when the two thousand and eight site plan for only lot or track E was done, oops, when track E was done. Because the zoning administrator looked at the nineteen eighty-five hearing notes and it says, M-one uses with environmental and with a site plan, he said, M-one uses, everything that they came for this particular lot fit in that box, fit in that, fit in that framework. The Z.A. would have you believe that when they came for this site plan, it was somehow an amendment to this site plan. And that is hard for us to even understand how we got there because it just isn't. The M, the M-one track A site plan does not govern the other site plans. It never was, it was never meant to be. So the, the two thousand and eight use site plan for this was a one, first time there was a site plan. So no administrative hearing was required, no shenanigans were going on, it followed the rules and it got there appropriately. Additionally, in the hearing at the Board of Adjustments, the Z.A. stated that, and misrepresented to them, that somehow in approving our appeal, it was some kind of slippery slope or open season on, on the zoning in that area. Because it would allow uses far and above whatever the county had recommended, the BCC of nineteen eighty-five. And that, you know, but his reading of it, where we have, you know, the, the actual statement says, M-one uses with a site plan and then an environmental study. They are forcing that language that is very simple and very clear to be, M-one uses that only counts for agricultural products or M-one uses that are only this, or M-one uses only for permissive uses. That is not what the county commission said. There's no slippery slope because the county commissioners chose to not put any additional qualifications, restrictions on the property except for the environmental. And the environmental covers all the uses that is allowed M-one uses, whether or not they should, would have triggered that. So the Z.A. is saying that the previous Z.A. and this appeal would trigger some upzoning and we're suggesting, and we feel very strongly, that by adding language into the original permit and the original language by this board, that the commission, by adding that original language, you are violating the law. And the law says, if you can read it and it's plain and it's clear, you can't add additional language. And by adding in only agricultural products and limiting it to only the original site plan a year after the decision was made, that's inappropriate because that was never a bargain forth by the, the members and the parties of that suit. When they, the owners came and they made an agreement, like we all, that we recognized that the county commissioners did, they came to a compromise, they believed they were getting M-one uses and only M-one uses with the environmental condition. They did not bargain for M-one uses. They did not bargain for M1 uses, but only agriculture, and only permissive, all the other onlys that were trying to write into this particular legislation. It is only M1 uses with a sole restriction of monitoring by the Environmental Health Department. We stand for questions.
Any question? Any question from commissioners? Okay, thank you, appellant. And now, we will move to the opponent's presentation, Mr. Nickham.
Madam Chair, I would just, I'd agree with Mr. Garcia's analysis. I'm staff, and these are the appellants. I don't have a particular dog in this fight, it's just, you know, I'm a, I'm an objective fact finder for the county, so I can do a quick closure if that's appropriate. Okay, very good. Madam Chair, Commissioners, thanks again for the opportunity to speak to you. The comment with regard to M2 zoning, that was made because the only zoning designation in Burn Leo County that allows for conditional M1 uses to occur is M2 zoning. So there is, there is a portion of that functioning as M2. Now, I think it's fair criticism to say that it's not all M2, but there, there would be an aspect of that would be M2 zoning. That would be the only zoning designation that would allow some of the uses that Mr. Williams indicated to occur permissively. The commission, in their nineteen eighty-five decision, decided, "We're going to transition from a zone change to a special use permit for the uses that you were seeking in your application." And the verbatim words in their application originally were, excuse me, "To allow for stockpiling of materials for processing of byproducts." And that's, that's taken verbatim from the original applicant's application to the county. So this is not an unusual practice. My department administers a number of special use permits that began their life as zone change requests, and were later amended by the board to be special use permits. That's standard practice for a certain era of time in county zoning administration. In fact, I'm told by people that are more experienced than I, that that's, that was for a period of time, the only way that you could get to a special use permit was by initiating a request for a zone change, that the board would then grant you a special use permit through that process. So there's nothing unusual about this particular special use permit and how it came to be. The contention that I am somehow adding words, I, I push back on that, I actually would say that Mr. Williams added things to his determination. He started to list things that were never discussed in the application, were never discussed in the hearing process, the public was never notified about these things. So I would say if there was a zoning administrator that added language, it would be Mr. Williams and his zoning certification from two thousand and five. Again, this, the question for you today is whether or not a staff member behind closed doors, without a hearing, without an appeals process, can overrule or supersede the things that you all do through your public hearing processes. My position is that is inappropriate, and with that, I recommend that you deny the appeal, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for? Yes, Vice Chair Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Ham, excuse me. Could you reply specifically to the appellant's position that the M1 language was in the original application? Reading it on the screen, I wasn't able to get to the detail that I think was intended.
Certainly. Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, so the original application was indeed for a zone change to M1. But in their description of what the request was seeking was to allow this stockpiling and processing of byproducts. So the only thing that the public would have been informed of, the only thing that the board would have had in front of them at their time of decision-making was that particular use. And there's correspondence from the original applicant in nineteen eighty-six that says, pursuant to your approval, here's the site plan that we would like the county to approve, following true to form the application that they made for stockpiling of products. The subsequent site plan that was signed without going through the hearing process, I determine that to be null and void, because it deprived the public from being able to be involved in that process, an appeal from being able to entertain. It also deprived you and your constituents from the stability that was intended to be created by the original decision. So another thing I should say is that it is not county practice to have multiple site plans for a single special use permit. A special use permit has a site plan, and that site plan can be modified to either expand or contract areas that are being utilized, as long as we stay under that level of intensity that a zoning administrator can't go above. But the assertion that multiple site plans can occur on a special use permit property, that's, that's not something that I've seen ever in county land use regulation, and it's not something that's described as a process to be allowed in code.
Need further questions for Mr. Ham?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
Essentially, what you're saying is that the, the previous administrator, zoning administrator erred in his understanding of what took place, of the record that was part of the nineteen eighty-five decision in terms of the special use permit.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, that's correct. The two thousand five and two thousand eight actions went above the authority of a zoning administrator, and they didn't follow procedure that was established in code. To be charitable, Mr. Williams, I worked with him, he was, I found him to be proficient most times, this particular instance is an exception. He did not have the benefit of the Board of County Commissioners' transcript in the case file. So that was something that county manager staff and county clerk staff helped us find in county records, so that we could review that in making the current contemporary determination. So, you know, I don't think Mr. Williams was doing something malicious, he just didn't have the board's minutes or transcript to inform his certification statement. That's something that we now have in the case file, and that really is a very key piece of information that led us to the conclusion that the folks acting at the time, sitting in your chairs, sought to limit this in a way that was consistent with the intent of the application, and consistent with the desires of the public to not have near fifty acres of M1 uses, but that they would agree to a compromise of, "We would allow this business to operate, so long as they're tied to a site development plan."
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ham. Any further questions? Thank you for your time. Now, the appellant can have a five-minute summation or rebuttal.
Two, I'm going to have to disagree, and it's a matter for you guys to decide, you know, is, when you read what the zoning commissioners did back in nineteen eighty-five, you have to ask yourself, "Did I plan this for nineteen eighty-six? Am I looking ahead and knowing that he's going to do this?" When they made their application, the application was for a zone change, they weren't required in the application to give a use, to lock themselves in forever to a use. Only on the fly, at the county commissioner's office, they had a compromise, and they came up with a plan. M1 uses as long as there was an environmental check. So you have to look at that language that the county commissioners did, and you have to say, "This is what they gave." And then a year later, after the fact, they came up with the M1 use, they came up with the M1 use for Track A. To say that Track A's use would forever govern all forty-five acres is hard for us to understand how we, the zoning administrator gets there. There is only a site plan for Track A, and there isn't only a site plan for Track E. There isn't any site plan for B, C, and D, which is the land we're talking about. Additionally, you have to look, you look at the, the county commissioners' language in their decision. M1 uses, a special use permit for M1 uses with a site plan and environmental. They could have said at that time, if this, if what the zoning administrator, their interpretation of what this is, they would have said, "M1 uses for agricultural stockpiling." If that's exactly what they believed to be true, they would have said that, but they didn't. They didn't put any extra language in, and the courts will not allow new language be added in now. So you have to ask today, you have to ask yourself, what did the county commissioners put in their, what did they approve? And they approved M1 uses, period. Then you have to ask, what is, does that match this two thousand twenty-two Z.A. letter? If it doesn't, because there's extra conditions put on this property today that wasn't put on in two thousand, nineteen eighty-five, you have to uphold our appeal. To have uses, M1 uses with only one criteria for the, for the environmental, to be changed to M1 uses for only stockpiling agricultural products, that is actually worse than if he had gotten a special use permit. At least a special use permit, he could have picked what he wanted to put on his property. But when he had, the original application was for a zone change, not a special use permit. He wasn't required, at the time this was done, to choose a use. So to now come up with and force upon this property a use that was never contemplated in nineteen eighty-five, and in nineteen eighty-six, it would be, it would be taking value away from a property that a property owner has had for a very long time. And it also goes to not having stability for, for you all to make a decision today on another property, and then being, knowing that the, in the future, that decision, that permit, or the zone change can be countermanded by a Z.A. without consideration, that would change, where would we have the stability for businesses to come to Albuquerque and do their business? To lock in these other lots and other tracks to a zone application and a site plan for only one lot from more than, almost forty years ago, would is problematic. Even when these lots have changed hands over and over again, they have never had a site plan. And what is being suggested is these lots are now tied to this site plan from nineteen eighty-six, a year after the hearing was held and the decision was made to give them an M1 uses. That is problematic, because there's no reliability on that. When you, someone goes and they say, "M1 uses," they trust M1 uses. They don't see M1 uses, because the imaginary restrictions on the property are, "M1 uses only stockpiling for agricultural products." That isn't anywhere in the record. It wasn't in the record in two thousand, nineteen eighty-five, it wasn't in the record in nineteen eighty-six, because it was only this in nineteen eighty-six, was only this in two thousand and nine. Now, these have no site plans, and yet, we're having to, now we're saying, "You can not only M1 uses, not even permissive uses." We're down to M1 uses only for agricultural product. And it's just not appropriate to go back and change the rules, and change the decision of the Board of Commissioners from nineteen eighty-five.
Thank you.
We stand for questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the appellate?
No, Madam Chair, maybe for Mr. Ham.
Yeah, the closer.
I just want to ask that, if I was going to apply for a special use permit and then get it, did, did they go and get a permit to have an asphalt plan after that? Or they didn't do that at all? They just thought for sure that was going to be forever?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, I'm not aware of any application being received by the county, nor City of Albuquerque Environmental Health.
It just seems weird that you would ask for a zone change, and then not ever even apply for a permit to, to do that.
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, if the question is, did they seek approval for an asphalt batch plan after the two thousand five letter? To my knowledge, no. And, and we've, we've had interactions with city staff through their quality division, and we've searched county records as far as things that we've issued either business licenses or building permits for. Nothing to indicate that that was ever pursued is in the county's records, nor the city's.
So, why would you do it if you're not going to do it, is my question.
Commissioner Casada, I, I, I don't know that I'm the person that can answer that for you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ham.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Piscotti.
Thanks. This does seem like a different kind of a case than we normally do, because it seems to me like there's a couple of things going on. I read through the agenda packet, and from what I got from that is that we are ruling on what happened in two thousand five, two thousand eight with that former zoning administrator. And from my reading of that history, it seems like there was, there were a lot of irregularities there, that there was no public hearing, no public comment, it was, it was not transparent. And it, as you keep saying, it did not include a, a decision by the county commissioners at the time. And ma'am, I heard your statement that the zoning, the former zoning administrator used a lot of the same language that a county commission would use, but I could use the same language as King Charles, that doesn't make me King Charles. So I guess, in my mind, it seems like, you know, if that was done inappropriately in two thousand, and I don't really get what happened between two thousand five, two thousand eight, but there was something that was amiss there. But that doesn't preclude the other party from going ahead and doing the process the way we normally do it, correct?
Chair, Commissioner Piscotti, not at all. This decision only supersedes the previous Z.A.'s determination to such that it corrects the process. The zoning administrator has an obligation in Section 24, if certificates are granted in conflict with the provisions of the zoning ordinance, they're rendered null and void. That's in the county zoning code, and it has been since its adoption in nineteen seventy-three. Nothing about what my determination does precludes any party from bringing forth an application to the county to seek, to undertake any use that they find to be appropriate on the property. It's just that a Z.A. can't make that decision, it's, it has to go to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, thanks.
May I speak to that question too? May I have that? Yes, you can. So in two thousand five, our certification letter was requested. The certification letter pretty much mirrored the language of the commission. M1 uses as long as there is an environmental and a site plan. He was not wrong. He, when I said he mirrored the language, it wasn't a King Charles thing, it was just, "I am the zoning administrator, I need to look at the record, and the record says, 'M1 uses,' requiring an environmental study." So he wasn't wrong in his two thousand and five letter. What the present zoning administrator is saying he's wrong is because, in his opinion, when the county commissioners said, "M1 uses with an environmental monitoring," it meant M1 uses are permissive only, or M1 uses locked into the agricultural piling. He's, he's putting this language into what the county commissioners did, saying, "It must only be on this, that was on the application." But the application was for a zone change, not a special use permit. So that application doesn't have a limited use that anyone agreed to. Only now, the Z.A. is saying, "We need to go back and stick that use in there." No one else has ever agreed to that. The previous zoning administrator, or the zoning administrator from two thousand and five did not, there was no, he just followed the rules. The rules say, repeat back what the county commissioners have ordered. And in two thousand and eight, because the site plan that came in matched what he believed to be the actual language of the original special use permit, the, the county ordinances allows him to sign off on the site plan. If it matches what they're supposed to do, he's allowed to sign off on it. There was no disconnect, because he believed he was following what the original county commissioners in nineteen eighty-five dictated for this site. That's the, that's the only disconnect.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, ma'am, I, thank you for your comment. I understand what, what you said. From my reading of it, it seems like he did not follow the rules, and with all due respect, we are elected officials, and we represent the public, and so a zoning administrator is not in that same role. But I, I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Thank you. And I know we have, we, you talked about staff, do you have staff closure of two minutes?
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner, Vice Chair Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And actually, Mr. Ham, this is for you, referring to her state. Actually, Mr. Ham, this is for you, referring to her statement. I'm confused at this point. In the original application in 1985, did it have a specific conditional use language or was it all M1 uses?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, the application, the form was prescribed for a zone change. And I think it's now appropriate for me to read this from Section 18. This is a 1988 zoning ordinance. It says, "It should be noted that special use permits may not be applied for by the applicant, rather they may be considered by the county planning commission only after it has been determined that the requested zone is inappropriate and that unique conditions and substantial labor support exist." So, the CBC denied the requested zone change. The board then had the option to undertake consideration of a special use permit. And in the application for the appeal, the app, the original applicant in 1985 indicated a use. And that was, that was what was, went out to the public. That's what was deliberated at a hearing. That was, that was what the decision to limit this based upon a site plan, in my reading of this, is that what that was based upon. It didn't say anything about all of these other M1 uses that Mr. Williams put into his letter. So, my letter returns the limits to that which is consistent with the original application and the statement and the letters from the original applicant.
Okay, so the zoning change was denied. So, then the, the special use was pursued. At that point, a conditional use was defined, correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, the appeal was, its original intent was to overturn the denial of the zone change. The board determined that the zone change was inappropriate. Again, they, they denied approving a zone change. That's never occurred on this property. What, what they did say is that, "We have this business owner in front of us. They want to operate this particular business. We'll compromise with the community and the business owner and say, 'Okay, you can do this activity, get the county a site plan.'" And that's how this process works. The board makes a decision. Either the planning commissioner of the board approves a special use permit, a site development plan consistent with the application in the terms of the approval goes back to the department to make sure that that's consistent with whatever transpired at the hearing. And the zoning administrator is the person that signs off on that. So, nothing unusual about an 85 approval leading to an 86 site plan or even an amended site plan down the road, provided that it followed the process in effect at the time. And in 2008, the zoning administrator would have had to convene a public hearing, allow for appeals, and none of that occurred.
So, the, so the special, the conditional use was specifically defined and then Mr. Williams brought in the definition to the original M1 scope?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, Mr. Williams' determination approved a list of M1 uses, even reaching into the conditional uses, which is above and beyond, even in the hypothetical scenario of what the board would have authorized had they approved the zone change.
Right. So, the conditional use had been defined specifically and then Mr. Williams then made it more general?
A rather large expansion, in my opinion. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I move to deny the appeal. I believe Commissioner Piscotti second. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Any aye, any, any nays? Okay, thank you. Has been cited. You have your decision that the appeal has been denied. Madam Chair, before we adjourn, if you can close out? Thank you. Okay. Item number six, announcement of the next zoning meeting, Tuesday, October 11, 2022. Zoning meeting at 3:00 PM here at Kent Sanjes Commission Chambers. If there's no other meeting, this, no other discussion, this meeting is adjourned.